Five o'clock, let's get started. Welcome, everyone. The February 2018 Town of Poughkeepsie Planning Board Meeting. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of Republic. To the republic, for which it stands, patient, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you.
One question.
Please keep Florida in your thoughts and prayers as well, that tragedy yesterday. Tonight we have four public hearings and three site plan reviews. One has been added, a time extension. Let's first move in. Number one, Raymond Avenue School redevelopment discussion and site plan hearing regarding a mixed-use development, including 181 apartments, 14,990 square foot commercial spaces, open area, and 220 parking spaces. Site redevelopment would convert a former school building to 47 apartments, construct two, three-story buildings, ground floor retail, and upper-story residential use, one four-story residential building over a garage podium, and site amenities. Twenty-five and 31 Raymond Avenue, Zoned ATC Arlington Town Center District, plus or minus 6.4 acres and plus or minus .4 acres respectively. It's an unlisted action, Paz Management, Inc., contract vendee, Arlington Grade School and Arlington Central School District owners.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Stu Messinger with Chasing Companies. Jacob Rekis is with me up here. We also have Richard Cantor and Amy Hake in the audience. Our understanding is that the public hearing has been adjourned for this evening. Am I correct in understanding that?
Well, we have to open it first.
Okay.
It's been adjourned too today.
It is adjourned today, but we'll continue to adjourn it.
We'll continue to adjourn it.
And that's fine with us. What I wanted to do, though, is indulge you guys for just a couple of minutes to talk about where we are procedurally and where we hope to go. As you know, we submitted a site plan back in December. We received comments from your consultants. There are two aspects of this action. There's a zoning amendment, which is a town board action, and for which you folks need to make an advisory opinion to the zoning board, and then there's the site plan itself. We're hopeful that we can continue to move forward on the zoning amendment piece. And so what we'd like to do is, with respect to the comments we received from your staff and consultants, we'd like to respond to those that affect zoning and come back to you in March, review those with you, and hopefully at that time, get your advisory opinion to the town board, so we can go see the town board about zoning. Meanwhile, we're considering the comments that we've received with respect to site plan. We're waiting to hear from DOT with respect to their comments, and then we'll make a decision about how best to move forward with that.
Okay.
So what I'm hoping is, if you folks have any comments that you'd like to ask us tonight about the zoning amendment piece, that we could respond to, for your next meeting, we would do that. If you don't have any comments, we'll just respond to those from your consultants and staff, but either way, we'd be back in March and ask you to move forward on the recommendation to the town board on zoning.
All right. Andy, so no additional comments on the plan tonight?
Nothing has changed. I mean, if you folks want to talk about it, that's great, but my thinking is, since we're kind of waiting to hear from DOT and we're considering the comments that we've got so far, that maybe we would suspend that until a future meeting.
Yep, that sounds fine.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Yep, let's do that. Do I hear a motion to open a public hearing?
Second.
Moved and seconded to open a public hearing. All those in question? Called a question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five to zero, passes. Does anyone in the audience wish to comment on this application? Seeing none, I move we adjourn the public hearing to March 15th, 2018. Moved and seconded to adjourn the public hearing to March 15th, 2018. Called a question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, five to zero. Okay, go around the board for some discussion. Anyone have any comments on the zoning amendment? Start with you, Peter. Brian?
I'm all set, thank you.
All set, then.
Yeah, I have nothing.
Looks like we're good. We've discussed the site plan in detail. One zoning issue I was concerned about when it was first, that change of zone completely, was the 12-story height, but that's been changed. What is the maximum height now?
Seventy feet, I believe.
Proposal? Okay. So I think we're all good with that, and...
Eric? Is there anything?
Anything?
Not now.
Any engineering comments at this time, Don?
No.
All right. Good. This one then.
Oh, yeah.
Here to read the recommendation.
I move that the planning board defer action on a recommendation on the zoning text amendment to add the anchor project use to the ATC zoning district and the site plan application, and direct the applicant to respond to the comments of the planning board and those received from the town departments and agencies, including, but not limited to...
Actually, since that's the resolution from January, you could just have an all-encompassing comments received.
There we go. Comments received, okay.
I hear a second.
Anybody second?
Second.
There we go. We'll get going.
Okay, motion's been made to defer action. Called a question, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
One recusal.
One recusal. Motion passes, four to zero.
Thank you very much, and we'll see you in March.
See you next time in March. Second application, public hearing tonight is Plan B Brewery Site Plan, a special use permit, public hearing for a proposed tasting room in the existing barn of a site of a brewery and farm for its ingredients. 115 Underhill Road, Zone R4A, residence, single-family, four-acre. Unlisted action, PBFB NY LLC owner. All right, welcome. Introduce yourself, please.
Sure. My name is Scott Volkman. I'm an attorney with Stengel, Roberts, Davis &amp; Diamond. I'm representing the applicant here this evening. This will be my first appearance on this, and we filed papers with the Planning Board Secretary authorizing us to appear on behalf of the applicant. I have Dennis Lynch with me from Mark Day Engineering, one of the engineers on a project. I have Mark Day behind me as well. I have Emily and Evan Watson, the proprietors of Plan B Farm Brewery, and their daughter, who is the chairman of the board, I believe.
Head of sales.
Head of sales, there we go.
And their parents as well. So the whole family's here for this family farm operation, so... We are here tonight for the continuation of the public hearing. I was not here last month. Following that public hearing, an additional revised submittal was made by Mark Day Engineering. Dennis made that submittal and responded to all of the various comments that were issued before then, and since that time, there have been subsequent comment memos, which I believe you have received, addressing the new plans, including sign-offs from the fire department as well as the highway superintendent. So I think it would be relevant for Dennis to just take you through the revised submittal, so everyone understands what was submitted, what his responses were to the prior concerns, and what responses have been received since that point in time before we decide to proceed.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Yep, take that mic with you.
The parcel is located at 115 Underhill Road. It's a 24-acre parcel. What we're proposing is a tasting room located at the existing barn. As part of that, the improvements, we are going to be widening the road at the request of the fire department. Currently, it's roughly 18 feet. We're going to be proposing to increase that to 26 feet. This is a blow-up of the area of the barn. We're putting a concrete pad in the front just to clean it up and to meet ADA requirements, providing circulation going around for fire access, and providing parking to the west of the park.
How many parking spaces, again, refreshable?
There's 20, opposed.
One of the... If I can. So one of the overriding issues here with this application, and one of the reasons I've gotten involved in here is to address the agricultural component of this project, and the applicability of the town zoning code to an agricultural use such as this, which exists in a certified agricultural district. So you have an agricultural use in an agricultural district, notwithstanding the underlying zoning that the town has imposed upon it. So because of that, there are... There's guidance from the state as far as the applicability of whether a special use permit is required, and even whether a site permit, a site plan is required. So we are deferring that discussion. That's a legal discussion that I'm having with Ms. Cobb, and we are proceeding with that application, and we'll make a decision before the next meeting on how we're going to proceed, at least as it pertains to the special use permit component of that. The site plan, we're here. There's a site plan that's been proposed. There's a site plan that's been amended. That's a process that we should conclude and bring to fruition, so we all know what's there and what's on the site, and I think it's beneficial for everyone to have that. But as a part of that, there are some underlying issues that have come to the forefront, particularly as it pertains to the overall agricultural use of the property, about access to the property, about the nature of the road that accesses the property, the width of that road, the improvements in that road, and water lines, fire hydrants, et cetera. So there are a couple of issues that we will be making a submittal to you post-public hearing at this point in time to address some of those. Again, most of those are legal issues that I'll be addressing to the board, but it's really for the benefit of my conversation with Ms. Cobb, but I'll make that submittal to you. And when we're done here, I'm going to ask you for a brief extension on Monday's deadline because of the holiday and the short timeframe and our recent involvement here to make that submittal, but I'll address that in the end.
You can work with Eric on...
Okay.
Is it a little bit of play there potentially?
Okay.
On the submittal date, but not a lot.
That would be helpful. But ultimately, we're going to open the public hearing here again when we're done talking, and I'm not sure if there's anyone from the public that's going to want to speak. If not, that's two...
We'll find out.
Two public hearings potentially without it. So we want to keep the record open, so we concur that the public hearing should be adjourned to next month, but because of the state guidance on this issue and the underlying agricultural uses here, we are going to be requesting that, you know, if all else is inappropriate, that that public hearing be closed next month, and that staff be authorized to draft a resolution for you to consider at that meeting and not to have to wait until the April meeting.
Yes, we're going to adjourn it tonight, and then we'll figure out going forward as the details are worked out.
Okay, fair enough. So why don't I let you open a public hearing, and then we can answer any of your questions or comments that you may have, all right?
For sure.
I move that the planning board open the public hearing?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to open a public hearing for this project. Called a question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion opposed? Motion passes, five to zero. Does anyone in the audience wish to comment on this plan tonight? Seeing none, I move we adjourn the public hearing to March 15th, 2018.
Second.
It's been moved to adjourn the hearing to March 15th. Called a question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, five to zero. Eric, do you have any... I mean, Kristen, do you have any comments on this?
Nope, I would refer to Lisa Cobb if there is any insight.
I don't think that there's anything that the board needs to address this evening. We will be receiving comments from the applicant concerning the road. We're doing some internal investigation to figure out who owns the road, what the scope of the road is historically, what it is now, so that we can provide the board with some better information about that. The applicant also will be providing us with information about the scope of their agricultural use. I've received some informal information, and it does appear that they meet the definition of a farm operation, but I'm waiting for the formal submittal to prove that. And then, once we have that in place, then we'll be in a position to recommend the board's further action.
That sounds good, eh? I know they grow a lot of their... Most of their own food for the beer, so that's a plus. All right. Anybody else have... Let me go around the board for comments. Nicole, do you have anything?
Yeah, my only thing really was lighting with putting in the new parking lots and things of that sort. If you can make sure that you have enough lighting so that it's safe, if you do have visitors there that are going to be there during, you know, the evening hours, make sure that there's no problems there with, you know, a safety issue. Want to make sure that there's enough lighting.
After... Right now, the hours of operation are until dusk, so there won't be anyone on-site at nighttime. But I mean, there will be lighting on the building, but we're not proposing any in the parking lot at this time.
All right, okay, thank you.
Brian?
Is there any plan for outdoor, outside seating, any type of that? I didn't see...
No, the original plan, we were calling the concrete area a patio, which it's not really a patio intended to have outside seating. We've since revised that as it's a concrete pad. Right now, it's just dirt, and it gets muddy when it rains, so obviously, that main entrance to the building, they want to have it as a hardened surface. So that's right now, that the concrete pad that's in the front is just basically to clean up the entrance to the building and for ADA requirements.
Right, and you have an ADA parking space nearby.
Correct. But you're not, like, giving people access to the lawn or any of that area outside surrounding the barn and that kind of... Like, what's your overflow? I mean, it's not a huge tasting room area. I mean, it's... My concern, it's a good concern to have, and I'm definitely in favor of the project. It's just like, you get a lot of folks showing up. Where are they all going, once... You know what I mean? So occupancy-wise, you have 20 spots, you have a small tasting room. Like I said, it's a good problem to have, it's just, a lot of times, these things take off, and...
Right, so the building will have stated occupancy limits as determined by the building department to begin with, so there are built-in restrictions on what can occur on the inside.
Okay.
I don't believe that there is an ability or an intent to restrict if there's people walking around the parking lot or waiting to get inside, that that is necessarily prohibited, just like any other farm stand operation in Dutchess County. You know, you have farm stands, which are accessory to a farming operation. A tasting room is an accessory used to a farm brewery under state law, so I think this can be analogized to that. So could there be people walking around outside? Potentially, yes, but you always are going to have stated occupancy limits that can be enforced by the building department on the inside of that structure.
All right.
Yeah.
Anything further, Brian?
No, I mean, like I said, it's a good problem to have, you know, overflow. I just, I know that a lot of times, companies like this, you know, breweries like this get popular, and then that... I just didn't know if there was a plan for that when that did happen. In the nice weather, I mean, that's a lot of times an issue for the neighbors in the neighborhood, so that was it.
All right, thanks. Anything, Ben?
Other than the tasting, is the use for this going to be for any type of events? Like, with the tasting, I understand people come, stay for a while, and leave, but do you plan to use it for any type of events, like a party gathering? You know, where people are there for three, four hours?
I can speak to that a little bit.
So, all right.
If you want, I mean, under the guidance, there is...
Right.
Specific events are allowed to occur. However, there are certain restrictions that are put on them by the state to comply with the Ag and Markets Law, and it's... I think it's anticipated that if they were going to hold events, they would seek a specific event permit for that, and then any concerns could be addressed at that time. Is that...
So that's fair. I mean, you know, those event permits may be required depending on the number of guests that are anticipated, okay? But an actual farm brewery license does contemplate a tasting room and also the ability to have limited events for, like, receptions...
Advertising, promotion.
And receptions and advertisements and things like that. So everything that will occur there will be in accordance with the state liquor license regulations and Ag and Market regulations, and if there does come a time that there's an event that, because of size, it requires some sort of greater permit for a public assembly, then those will be dealt with on an as-needed basis.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Anything further, Ben?
That's it.
All right, Peter?
Just one question for Mr. Lynch. Your site plan has the septic system marked as... It's dated December 25th. It's marked approved SDS, and we have a letter from the county health department dated February 7th that says that prior to the use of the onsite sewage treatment system, this office must accept their adequacy. So sometime between now and the next time we meet. Are you familiar with that?
Yeah, what's the question?
The question is, your map says approved SDS.
Yes.
And we have a letter from the county that says, prior to the use of the onsite sewage treatment system, this office must accept their adequacy.
The septic has been approved by the Board of Health. It's been installed, and what they're asking for, now that it's installed, they have to sign off on it, which is up at the Board of Health now, so they're going to be signing...
So they haven't signed off on it?
Not that... They approved the system, it's in, and they just have to do a construction completion.
A final sign-off.
A final sign-off that it was installed as per the plan. So that should be coming shortly. But there is an approval from the Board of Health.
Our engineer...
You'll copy us on their final sign-off?
They'll copy, they circulate to everybody.
Good, thank you.
Question. So, and I'm sorry if I missed it. Where are you producing most of the product? Is that being on-site?
In that facility, yes, right inside the barn.
Your stills and everything, that's going to all be in that barn.
In the barn, yeah.
In that barn, all right.
Yeah, the brewing of the beer.
Brewing, yeah.
Yeah, there's actually...
Just grab the mic, Dan.
It's existed for a couple of years.
Okay.
As a production facility. This is the portion that would be the tasting room, and then this half of the building over here is where the production of the... Yeah, the brewing actually takes place.
Gotcha, okay.
Anything, Don, from engineering standpoint?
So before you address number C, Mr. Chairman, if I could, we are also reviewing, now that we're involved in here, the SEAKER classification as this was originally submitted. So during the pendency of deferring action, we are also potentially going to be suggesting that this may not be an unlisted action, it may be a type-two action. Nothing for you to deal with tonight, but just telling you that we are reviewing this globally now, and it appears that it may be eligible to be a type-two action, and if so, we will revise our plans accordingly.
Yep, SEAKER will change that.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Ready? I move that the planning board determine that the applications are incomplete for SEAKER review, and therefore move to defer the action on the special use application and the site plan application.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to determine the application is incomplete for SEAKER. Called a question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, five to zero. All right, thanks.
So I can deal with Mr. Holman about a couple of days' extension on the legal submittals or with Kristen?
You can do it with me, too.
Well, someone said he was the guy, so, you know, I don't want to speak on the turn here.
Kristen's handling this one, but there's no problem.
Okay, so I'll deal with Kristen directly on that, and then...
When do you expect to get it in? When do you expect to be able to get it in?
The crucial question is the turnaround time for circulation and internal staff review in time to get those comments to the planning board.
Right, before it...
That's the crucial thing. So what would help is to know when you expect to have something ready to go in. Would you have it by Thursday, Friday?
I would definitely have it by Friday, and I'll do what I can to get it in by Thursday, all right? Just with the intervening holiday and staff issues, I just don't want to cut myself short on that.
We're crunched on both ends. It's time with a short month, as well as the third month, Thursday in March is early as well.
Unfortunately, as a practical matter, a lot of the issues are legal issues, and I know Lisa has nothing else to do except for wait for my submittal, and she's anxiously waiting it, so she'll be able to get right on that. And then, once that's submitted, can I talk to staff about the prospect of a resolution being included next month in the event that the public hearing can be closed?
Yes, you can always give them a call.
Okay, fair enough.
Kristen, a call, and she'll work it out with you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, and good luck, guys.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
It's a good project.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is River Point Residential in West Park Professional Building Site Plan and Aquatic Resource Permit Hearing and Lot Line Revision Regarding a Proposed Development Plan Amended to Include a Single Seven-Story Building Containing 85 Age-Restricted Dwelling Units, Plus or Minus 31,534 Square Feet Medical Office, and Plus or Minus 13,976 Square Feet Retail Pharmacy or Medical Service Uses. 2055 South Road and 83 Old Post Road, Zoned OR Office Research District with a Senior Housing Overlay District Shawed Designation, 7.14 Acres. Negative Declaration Adopted March 20th, 2014, WA Route 9 LLC Owners. Eric?
We haven't received a submittal, so we're just recommending the board adjourn the site plan aquatic resource permit to May 17th, as indicated.
All right. Anyone have any comments on it?
No.
All right. Want to read it?
Go ahead. Sure, give yourself a break. The Planning Department recommends that the planning board adjourn the site plan and aquatic resource permit public hearing to May 17th, 2018, subject to the readversment of the public hearing for revised submittal.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adjourn the site plan. Is May 17th, this is a 24-month extension from May 6th... To the... Okay, I got you, all right. Two months, that would cover it, okay.
I anticipated that.
Been moved and seconded. Good catch, Peter. Called a question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, five to zero. Fourth public hearing tonight is McDonald Heights Town Center, Eastdale Village, Site Plan Subdivision and Special Use Permit Public Hearing for a Proposed Mixed-Use Development Consisting of Up to 390 Residential Units, Dwelling Units and Apartments and Town Homes, 85,000 to 180,000 Square Foot of Commercial and Non-Residential Space, Recreational Amenities and Associated Parking and Utilities. 928, 932, 935, and 936 Dutchess Turnpike and Victory Lane, Zoned MHC McDonald Heights Town Center, and IH Heavy Industry Industrial Districts, Plus or Minus 60.87 Acres. It's a Type 1 Action, Meadowview Properties LLC, Kirchhoff Properties LLC, and Industrial Retro LLC Owners.
We didn't receive a submittal for... I'm sorry, we're working on the findings for the board's consideration. There's a number of issues to work through, including traffic. Those are in process, and we expect to have a draft document ready for consideration by the board next month.
Okay, sounds good.
Therefore, in the meantime, now that's relating to SEAKER, this action presently before the board and the public hearing is not on SEAKER, it is on the site plan. before the board and the public hearing is, is not on seeker, it is on the site plan, the applications to the planning board, which can proceed in the, while the seeker's outstanding, but in this case, it's, it's pending, pending an outcome of seeker, and the applicant, I believe, is expecting to have plans forthcoming either at the next meeting or thereafter.
Uh huh. Sounds good. Anyone have any comments on this plan tonight? Seeing none, I move, we, we, excuse me, I move we adjourn the site plan subdivision and special use public, special use permit public hearing to March fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
Second.
It's moved and seconded to adjourn to March fifteenth. Call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five to zero. At this time, I ask for a motion to suspend the rules to allow comments and other agenda items tonight.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second, do I hear a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to suspend the rules. Call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five to zero. Has any west, anybody in the audience wish to comment on any other agenda items tonight? The mic's right there, you can, any comments you want to make. Okay, seeing none, I move we resume the rules.
Second.
Moved and seconded to resume the rules. Call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Next item on the agenda, Forty-Three Violet Avenue, Site Plan Review for an Approved Renovation of an Existing Building and Site Plan Approvements to Provide an Ice Cream Parlor and One Tenant Space and a Second Retail Business in the Second Tenant Space and an Outdoor Dining Area on Forty-Three Violet Avenue Zone BN Neighborhood Business District, point four-four acres, Type-Two Action Hand S Corporation Owner. Kristen, have you...
Sure, I am, yeah.
Well, let you go ahead first.
Hi.
Welcome.
So we're back again. Would you like me to review the project again, or, I understand we're...
Just tell us your name.
Christina Ducharme, Christina Ducharme Architecture.
She was here in January? Yes, okay.
Yeah, so Christina is here on behalf of the owners of the property, they're looking to put in an ice cream shop and another retail space at Forty-Three Violet Avenue, they're going to be doing some, some good work on the property to clean it up, and they're here because we received comments from Dutchess County Planning and also Town Sewer late on January eighteenth, which was the day of the planning board meeting in January. So, per general municipal law, we wanted the applicant to come back in, have a discussion of the comments received, because Dutchess County did state that it was a matter of local concern, but they had a few comments, so we just wanted to give the board an opportunity to weigh in on said comments.
All right, thanks, Krista. That being the case, we'll go around the board, start with engineering this time.
We had no comment on...
We had no comment on the comments.
All right, Peter, any further comments on this application? Ben?
No.
Brian?
I'm, I'm good.
Nicole?
I, I just, I'm talking about lighting, I don't know why that is, but just again, with the lighting, I, I saw in the comments that it said that it was directed upward, if we can just make sure that it's directed downward, since you have neighbors and things of that sort. And then, again, just, of course, you know this, but again, with the landscape buffer, if you can keep that no less than ten feet along the front, that was another concern. Other than that, that's all I have.
I do have one quick question for you.
Sure.
And that is, you know, and the photometrics, and that is, the county's termed about, you know, one-foot candle for pedestrian areas, are you, is your plan, it's hard to tell from, from the scheme that you have here, is you, are you in conformance with what the county has in mind?
Yes, we should be in conformance. What we often do for lighting is we'll put a note on there that gives the board a period of time after the certificate of occupancy to adjust anything, if, if anyone complains, or if, if the board feels that there's not enough lighting, we've, we've often done that, to give a period of thirty days to, to, once everything's installed, for, for adjustments if needed.
Okay, have, have we looked at that? Have you looked at the plan in terms of the county's comment with regard to the illumination?
So, we haven't gotten into details in that nature, you may recall, in January, when they were here, we did bring up lighting as a concern.
Right.
So, this was provided, these plans that are before you tonight, were provided at that planning board meeting, but we haven't, the applicant has not had a chance to, well, they did, but we wanted to wait till they had all comments, to work with staff and address any issues, so lighting would fold into that.
So it will be addressed?
Yes.
It was a conditional...
Yes.
Issue. Yeah, I mean, thank you. The neighbors next door, that's certainly an issue to...
Sure.
Be of concern. It's good the county brought that up as well.
I did want to just clarify something, too, because I know that we talked about a landscape buffer, I just wanted to make sure that it was clear that the, the county is quoting language from the design guideline, guidelines that are mentioned in the business, neighborhood business district, and because this project is adaptive reuse, there are not, it's, it's the board's discretion as to whether or not that is required. If this were a new development project, it would absolutely be a shall, and it would be required, so that might be something we want to elaborate on, because Nicole brings up a good point. They are looking, as the, the buffer stands now, to improve the existing buffer with plantings and clean it up. I'm not, I don't recall the, the width of that.
Right, we're not proposing to enlarge the buffer, we're trying to use as much of the existing features as possible and clean it up, improve the aesthetics, and give the owners a chance to put as much money into their, the building and improvements and their businesses as possible.
Yeah, I mean, that's the way we approved it last month, and you were looking into some, some conditional issues such as connectivity to the dali, dali site for pedestrians.
Correct, yes, we were talking about sidewalk, a portion of sidewalk to connect to that property.
Uh huh. And there's nothing to say you can't do further improvements in the future if you...
That's right.
If you, as the business becomes successful.
And just also, as an aside, for the town sewer comments, I did have a conversation with Frank Ozoni, our sewer superintendent, and he said that he's more than willing to set up a conference call to talk through any of those comments he had provided, but nothing glaring, it's something that would be worked out with a plumber that is hired by the property owner.
Sure.
And just to be on the safe side, you had, at the last meeting, you suggested a fence on the northern perimeter of the site, make sure that it's conformance with the BN, the height of the fences is in conformance with the BN district.
Absolutely.
Was that proposed at six feet, or? You know, it differs from district to district, I'm really not sure, you know, it can go be anywhere from three to six feet.
Right.
Yeah, but there is an existing fence, too, so I know that that was a discussion that we were definitely, but due to the nature receipt of the county comments, we wanted to, before they started work and then stopped and had to restart, we want to do it most efficiently, so we'll, we'll be addressing it.
Look before you leap.
That's good.
All right.
Ready?
We're good to go.
I move that the planning board amend its January eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen conditional site plan approval for the Forty-Three Violet Avenue project to replace the conditions of the site plan approval as follows. Respond to the, to comments of the planning board and those received by town departments and agencies, said, said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness inclusive of the following, one through five.
And, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to grant conditional site plan approval. Call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you all.
And good luck.
Thank you.
Again. Second item on the agenda now is Minari Ranucci Lot Line Revision, Lot Line Revision Review Regarding Lot Line Alteration to Convey Point One Seven One Acres Thirty-Three Valley View Road and Twenty-Nine Valley View Road Zone R Twenty Residential Single Family Twenty-Thousand Square Feet District, point eight-seven and one point five-five acres respectively. Unlisted action, Matthew Minari and Lynn Minari owners and James Renucci, Jennifer Ranucci owners. Welcome.
How you doing? My name is Brandon Johnson, I'm a professional land surveyor with TEC Land Surveying, hopefully just observing what I hope happens here now. But willing to answer any questions.
Sounds good.
There was, I'll just jump in, the, this application was conditionally approved, was conditionally approved in September of two thousand and seventeen, in resolving the conditions of approval, there were a couple of questions about code interpretation, during that time, the application expired, I think, I believe those questions of interpretation have been resolved, the applicant is revising the plans in accordance with those conditions, therefore, we're just recommending that the board reapprove plan as, as proposed here, and they should be able to move forward fairly quickly.
It's basically, yeah, basically the same conditions as before.
Correct.
All right, thank you, Eric. Let's go around the board quick.
Well, I have a question that maybe we can answer. On our meeting on Tuesday, we said that they needed a possible new map and new legal description, is that still something that we need?
That, that's part of the conditions of approval, so...
Okay.
See, we're left to... So I was understanding conditions before, they had to show that frontage and et cetera.
Right.
That, that had met the code.
Okay.
Anything, Brian?
I'm all set.
Ben?
Okay.
Peter?
I would just say, in, in the future, for purposes of clarity, note on the, on your map, you have lot line to be removed, make a note, propose new lot line, just so we don't have to, you know, we're, we're amateurs. The easier you make it for us, the better.
Yeah, there was actually further revisions as well to actually meets and bounds that line and further depict the actual parcel that's being conveyed, and it's, the new plot will definitely be more clear.
Terrific, yeah. I'm just saying...
Totally understand.
The, there's an old saying, the most faded ink is clearer than the sharpest memory.
You ready? Go ahead. Do you have anything?
I'm, I'm good. I move that the planning board, I move that the planning board is, well, it's not written correctly, is the only involved agency for seeker review of an unlisted action, determine that environmental conditions for the subject of this application are substantially unchanged since previous review on September fourteenth, two thousand and seventeen, and that the lot line revision will not have a significant adverse effect on the environment, and that no environmental impact statement will be required for the reasons set forth in the negative declaration dated February fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen, prepared by the planning department. So I move, oh, so we got a...
Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded, that, that's an unlisted action. Call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero.
I move that the planning board grant conditional lot line revision approval, subject to the conditions of the lot line revision approval and planning board discussion of September fourteenth, two thousand and seventeen.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to grant conditional lot line approval. Call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have one additional agenda item tonight, time extension, the key construction building, time extension of an approved architectural review regarding modifications to the smaller northern one of two existing buildings for a construction business, twenty-two sixty-four to twenty-two seventy South Road Zone BH Highway Business, Type-Two Action Town Center Poughkeepsie LLC Owner. Any comments on this, Eric?
No, it's a request for a time extension, they, he wants to pull a building permit, hasn't quite gotten there yet, this will give him time to do so.
All right, thanks.
I'll make a motion that the planning board grant a time extension of architectural review approval from February sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen until, forward to May seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen.
Second it.
It's moved and seconded to grant a time extension, I call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. Sorry, a little late.
He, he's not opposed. Motion passes five to zero. Any other business tonight?
Make a motion, we suspend the meeting. Can't do that.
Terminate.
Terminate. Terminate the meeting, sorry.
Second.
Okay, good. We moved and seconded to terminate the meeting, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting terminated. Thanks, everyone.
Oh, shortened.